Okay.
Okay.
Ready?
She bought pizza for us in the parking lot.
You ready? Hello, ready? Okay.
Yeah, they were thirteen dollars each.
Good evening and welcome to the May 12, 2014 regular meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education. I hereby call the meeting to order. In just a couple preliminary notes, Mike Kinsey is traveling, he's out of town with his daughter right now and wasn't able to make it back, so he will not be joining us tonight. Now, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now Sue Flynn will read the school district's mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you, Sue. And now, the first item on our agenda, we've got the first of two partners, partnership recognitions for partners in education. And Crystal Buzza is here, and I would invite her to come up to the podium. The first one we have on our agenda, it's Exhibit A on page one, and this is, I want to make sure I'm pronouncing this correctly, is it IGUS or, okay, IGUS Marketing, and they're going to be a partner at large, so welcome.
Thank you. I'm very excited that I have Danita Gadsden with me here tonight. She's going to be joining with her business as a partner at large, and I'll let her explain a little bit more about what they do, but as some of you may know, we don't have a lot of partners at large that sign, but basically, a partner at large really supports the district as a whole. And we really felt like, after talking to Danita, some of the stuff that she really wanted to do for the district, I said, "You should just be a partner at large, because what you are going to offer us and the opportunity just makes sense." And so, it's a really unique program that we will benefit greatly from here in Waterloo to help spread the great news of what we are doing. So first, Danita, I just want to present you with a certificate that just recognizes you as a partner at large on this day, May 12, so thank you.
Thank you. Yes. (applause).
Hello, as Crystal said, my name is Danita Gadsden, and I am the owner of IGUS Marketing. I'm very pleased to become a Partner in Education member with the Waterloo Community School District. My family and I moved here in 2004, and since that time, we've become entrenched here, we're settled here. We have two children that are products of the Waterloo Community School District, both graduates of East High School. One right now is a student at Hawkeye Community College, the other is going to be finishing up his degree requirements in August with the bachelor's from Iowa State University. This is our community. Many of you, if not all of you, knew my husband Willie. You knew that he was very passionate about working with the youth in the community, and in particular, about working with the wrestling community. My passion has been and is helping small businesses to thrive and to create more vibrant communities. This passion of mine started probably thirty years ago. We were living in New Orleans, and I remember coming home from Southern University where I was teaching, and I remember just saying, "Lord, I wish I knew how I could help Paul." Paul was a neighbor of mine, of ours, and Paul had a truck, and that truck was part of Paul's livelihood. And I also remember, and this is a true story, I also remember going to scripture, and the scripture that I went to said, "Commit thy works unto the Lord, and he will establish thy thoughts." Forward, in 2004, we moved here, and I started working with an organization that provided me the opportunity to help many Pauls during business consulting and technical assistance, providing help to small businesses. And so, that seed that was planted thirty years earlier had started to grow. Last year, in 2013, my husband passed away. In October, I decided that I wanted to continue to help small businesses, and I launched a business called IGUS Marketing. IGUS Marketing uses a revolutionary business co-op approach to provide our businesses with an opportunity to get the exposure that they need. Lots of times, we look at television and we see those companies, and some of them I probably shouldn't name, but I will, because they are the companies that really are those big companies, you know, the McDonald's. And the Pauls that I know can't afford, don't have the ad budget to do the kind of work that the McDonald's and the Hardee's and the other big businesses can do. But with my company, the Pauls will have that opportunity. So, this revolutionary business co-op platform provides to my clients, my business clients, the exposure to multiple markets through a growing network of indoor digital signage. And that network is growing. Right now, in the Waterloo-Cedar Falls area, since November of last year, I actually have six screens, and again, I know you probably have questions, but I'm trying to paint here a vision of a sixty-inch screen and a location where there is high traffic and significant dwell time. And on those screens, my businesses, my clients, will have an opportunity now to say, "Hey, I'm Paul, your small business, you know, your lawn care business, or your HVAC business, or your realtor, or your insurance provider, I'm Paul." So, this is, you know, when I was, I was giving this, I don't know if my time is wrapping up here, but I was given this opportunity. My dream, my passion, as I said, is to help small businesses to thrive and to grow, and a part of that is also helping communities to do the same. Our partnership with the Waterloo Community School District will be trailblazing. Through our partnership, you will be able to increase your brand recognition and your reputation. You are going to get additional branding, you're going to get additional exposure, and you're going to get to tell your story, the story of what makes Waterloo and what makes Waterloo Community School District a really great place. Not just for the community, but my vision is big, and so, it's for the state of Iowa and for those places beyond the state of Iowa. The bottom line is, the stronger our schools are, the stronger our small businesses are, the stronger our communities will be. And so, I'm really looking forward to this partnership, I'm looking forward to finding out more about how I can continue, how I can begin to help to be one of the excellent partners that you currently have. That's, thank you.
Thank you.[510.12][510.12](applause). And Mrs. Gadsden, thank you again for all you and your late husband have done for the Waterloo Schools, because I know it's been a lot. He was a neat man, but it's really a pleasure to see you here and to see your son here as well, welcome. And we are, we're very grateful to all that you've done and look forward to a great relationship too, with the partnership, so, and with IGUS Marketing, so, thanks again. All right, and the second partnership recognition we have is with Amy Weenan's Real Estate. And I know Amy is here, and invite Crystal to come up as well. This is a partnership with Orange Elementary, and Terry Trask is here, the principal of Orange, and invite Crystal to give us some background information on this. It's Exhibit B on page two.
All right, well, we are very excited that Amy Weenan's Real Estate Group, which has become this huge massive network of real estate agents here in Waterloo, will be joining Orange Elementary. And so, it just makes sense as we're continuing to grow that neighborhood school, to bring in a nice partner in ed that really knows the area and is very dedicated, and Amy herself has been a big part of the foundation, so we really appreciate that. I'm going to actually let Terry take it over and present Anna, who's from Amy's office, with the certificate, and then Anna will talk a little bit about why they decided to be involved and kind of what they're hoping to do.
Great, thank you.
Well, Anna, we are excited, I know you're accepting this on behalf of, but we are very excited for you guys to be joining us. And actually, I wanted to share with all of you an email that I had sent out to our partners when I found out that you were coming on board. And here's just a snippet from that, it says, "I reviewed their partner profile sheet, I could not quit smiling. Talk about a perfect match." Their mission is obsessively working for you, and they say it is to service all of their real estate needs, their clients' real estate needs. It says, "They will always remember it is quality service, honesty, loyalty, understanding, accountability, and creativity to our clients that make us so very different from the average real estate team." So, the words I highlighted and read were the ones that jumped off to me as I thought about our own Orange Elementary mission statement, which is inspiring a community of lifelong learners and leaders. And our PIE mission statement, which is, "An active partnership between businesses and school focused on the enhancement of learning and growing to inspire lifelong learners and leaders. Our seven habits, leader in me, our clients being our students." So, with that, we are very excited to bring on the Amy Weenan's Real Estate Team as an official partner in ed at Orange Elementary. Looking forward to it.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. We at Amy Weenan's Real Estate are just, we're so proud of Waterloo Schools. Amy is a big part of the Waterloo School Foundation, and it just is a really natural fit for us to be a part of Orange Elementary. And we are super thrilled about the opportunity, and we're excited to get to work, and we couldn't be bigger supporters of the school district, and we can't wait to partner with Terry and all the other partners there. So, thank you so much.
Thanks. Great, thank you.[710.12][710.12](applause). And again, Amy was mentioned on the Waterloo Schools Foundation, the support you've given that, I know, it's been a tremendous amount of work that you've put into it, but you've been very beneficial to the Schools Foundation, and we appreciate that as well. So, thank you to everybody on your team, and we wish you nothing but the best at Orange. There's a great with Mrs. Trask.
(inaudible).
There, who's that?
This is Shay Pratt.
Oh, okay.[741.41][741.41](laughing).
She has a real estate background.
Okay, well, welcome to you as well, so.
(inaudible).
Yes, but no, we welcome you all. And like I was saying with Mrs. Trask, there are great things going on at Orange, so we hope you enjoy that relationship as well. Thanks again. All right, the next item on our agenda is another very good thing, we've got quite a few of them tonight. This is a recognition of Rochelle Brown, who's a longtime educator in our district, has taught for a number of years.[776.82][776.82](laughing) No, and all, and I think kind of found your calling in, in teaching in alternative ed settings, I guess, and you've done a tremendous amount of good, I know, for a number of kids, because I've heard from them and their parents over the years. So, this is a recognition, you're receiving a lifetime achievement award for it, but it's a recognition that I know is very well deserved. So, with that, this is Exhibit C on page three, I'll turn it over to Tara Thomas for more background information.
Thank you, Mike, and yes, Rochelle, you were so young when you started. That's, that's how you've amassed all this experience. We want to acknowledge that Rochelle is one of only three Northeast Iowa teachers to be honored with this lifetime achievement award at the recent 2014 Iowa Association of Alternative Education State Conference. Now, one thing we should note, under Rochelle's direction, being a member of the IAEA, with the staff at Expo, many other staff members in our district, and Rochelle's leadership, this conference that we recently held under our district's tutelage was the most financially successful spring conference ever held, and it, to some degree, according to the nominators of this award for her, it really saved the organization in many respects in terms of its finances, getting it back on a good standing, as well as now reminding everybody about all the wonderful alternative education options that Waterloo is progressively leading the state with. So, I wanted to just real quickly read one line from a couple, one sentence from another nominator's recommendation that I thought spoke very highly of Rochelle. "She represents a gem in the pool of advocates guaranteeing the continuous search for pathways to education for all students. Her contributions over many years qualify her as a recipient of the lifetime achievement award. We can all be proud of this gem in our midst." So, congratulations to Rochelle Brown, who's receiving the Jim Fenton Lifetime Achievement Award.
Thank you.[899.12][899.12](applause).
As you know, I am very passionate about alternative education and the students that I work with. I think that passion sometimes puts me sideways with a few of my good friends, as I see our superintendent and my principal here.[918.12][918.12](laughing).
Hey, when we put her at the mall, she flourished.[924.32][924.32](laughing).
And you know, it's sad, as a fiscally conservative Republican, I'm all about not spending money, I seriously, I am.[933.62][933.62](laughing) And it is, it is true that when you see another program, but it, our students, one size doesn't fit all. I don't think any student wakes up in the morning saying, "I'm gonna drop out of school."
Yeah.
So, you know, when I get a phone call from my administrator and he says, "Well, Adrian called and there's another student," I mean, I'm like, "Awesome," because I believe I have a bag full of tricks. They're not tricks, but they're different little things that I look deep down inside and say, "What's going to work for that student?" Because one size doesn't fit all, and I think if we just keep working, 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 we'll find a way to engage them back in school, slowly but surely. I mean, and thanks to you with the program out of the mall, if you build it, they will come. I'm full, well, I'm not full, but I mean, there are a lot of students out there, and they're doing great work, and they are, they are going, they are going to graduate, and so, I appreciate all that, and you, as you know, I love, I love that student that has taken that detoured path. So, I appreciate the opportunity to always get to work with them and in this district, because East and West are doing great things. I honestly believe there are great programs, great teachers, working hard, but they, they're trying. We just need to all keep trying together. So, thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm gonna keep working for you, thanks.
And that's good, because, yeah, we, there's, there's so much to be done, but there's so many good things going on too, so.
Yes.
Thank you for your work in doing that, and it is, we talk about multiple pathways, I guess, for kids, because it's not necessarily one-size-fits-all approach.
Maybe someday we'll be extinct, wouldn't that be awesome? That's what I always say, wouldn't that be awesome to lose your job because you were extinct?
Yes, yes.
That's, that's, you know, the good, the best goal ever, to be extinct.
But there, there are great things going on, and that's thanks to you and your work over the years and many, many others as well.
Oh, and all of Expo, Expo has worked hard, yes.
Exactly.
My dear love principal works hard with me.[1059.41][1059.41](laughing). Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Congratulations.[1066.82][1066.82](applause).
All right, and the next item we have on our agenda, and this one is for Board Action, but this is also another very good thing. It's a donation from a couple funds at the Community Foundation of Northeast Iowa, and I know Crystal Buzza is here with this, and I don't know if we have anybody, but, okay, we'll have Crystal talk about this. First, I'll get the motion on the board. There are two donations to come before the board for approval, one from the Dr. Carleen Bradford-Phillips Fund, and then one, and that's for Carver, and then one for West High from the John and Marge Young Family Fund. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept and acknowledge the donations in the amount of $400 to George Washington Carver Academy and $3,015 to West High School. Can we get that motion on the floor, please?
So moved.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Okay, and Crystal.
Thank you. So, these are two funds that are held at the Community Foundation, and every year, we will, we receive a check for their fund, and the amount has varied throughout the years since I've been at the district. Last year, I think the one for Carver was around 300, and the one for West was around 2,000. And so, based on interest, the money will fluctuate, but the one for Carver is really to try to benefit education at Carver for students. The one at West is written just to benefit West High School, so whatever the administration team feels that they need help for, this is something that they can use. And so, it's been a really great benefit. I know in the past, Carver has used their money to really help build up their robotics and their STEM program, which we've really seen a huge jump and gain, and so, I would suspect they'll do something similar, and as West continues to grow and working on their PBIS and some of their ISC three, C3 initiatives, that's kind of something that they've looked to use this money for, is to, you know, really encourage their students to continue to work hard.
Thank you very much. Any questions or discussion? If not, then all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion carried, Crystal, please express our gratitude to both, both funds and to the Community Foundation as well, so, thank you. And then, the next item we have on our agenda is Exhibit E, and this is a donation from the RJ McElroy Trust, and they provide funds basically for emergency purpose funds that they have for years and years and years, I believe, at all of our schools, and then this is to replenish the funding at a few of our schools, and those include Irving, Lou Henry, Orange Elementary Schools, Bunker Middle School, and West High School. And so, the recommended motion, it's Exhibit E on page five, is that the Board of Education accept and acknowledge the donation in the amount of $2,200 from the RJ McElroy Trust for the 2013-2014 school year. Can we get that motion on the floor?
So moved.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, and Crystal, any?
Like you said, Mr. Young, the, the trust has been very generous in helping the Waterloo Schools meet needs that we might not normally be able to meet to help our students succeed. And so, of interest, I thought this might be of interest to you, this will be the second request that Irving has made for this year, it'll be the first, each year they start off with a allotted amount, and so, as they use their funding, we can request additional dollars from McElroy. They look at how we use it, and they can determine whether or not they'll fulfill that request or not. So, this will be the first time that Irving has requested another payment, it'll be the third time that Orange and West have requested another payment, and the second time for Bunker. And so, they've been extremely generous in helping us with our needs, and I did also want to mention, and I know Stacy would want to make sure we mention this too, it's not just for emergency needs, like we need to get medicine for this child or take them to the doctor, it's also for opportunities too, so if there's a camp that a child wants to be a part of, but their family can't afford to send them to it, and there is a big educational need that it would meet, and we feel it's beneficial to them, they will help us in paying for that, so, we appreciate everything they do.
Yes, and I, just to follow up on that, I think it's entirely discretionary with the principal, I mean, there, I think there's some general goals from the McElroy Trust, and that Stacy Van Gorb that has it, but I think it's really left to the principals to use it.
Correct.
As they see fit, so there aren't a lot of rules and regulations, I guess, strings attached.
Right. I mean, the worst thing Stacy would ever want us to hear is that we have a child who needs something or some, you know, to help them with their education or their health, and we can't help them. That should never be a barrier, every child should be able to experience the same type of education any other child in their class would have.
Exactly, yeah.
And Crystal, I was just wondering, can any principal apply for this, and they just...
Every school gets the money every year, and so, each principal gets a letter at the beginning of the year with how much they have and how to use the money and request it, and so, whenever they do need more funding, they know they can certainly ask for it. And usually, they work really closely with the business office, Jeff Sommerfeld and Mr. Coughlin's office is very good about letting them know kind of where they're at and encouraging them to continue to use it.
Thanks. Great, any other questions? No, thank you, Crystal. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And then, chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to Exhibit F, it's on page six of our agenda, and this is probably the biggest one, and we have a number of people here who have been working for a very long time on this. It's a recommendation from the District Athletic Committee, a committee that was put in place, actually, in July of, of last year, and they've been working very hard over the months, and we've got the report before us, it's in our board packet, it's in Exhibit F, starts on page six, and what we'll do is, why don't we get the motion on the floor, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Norris for some more background information. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept the recommendations of the Athletic Committee with appreciation to the members who served.
So moved.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, and Dr. Norris, if you could provide some background on this.
Be happy to. Well, I want to thank many of our members, well, all of our members for serving, we had approximately twenty-five to thirty members total that were able to join us, and we broke our efforts after discussing the initial charge, which was to improve athletics in our entire community, improve athletic experiences for all young people, and kind of a subtext was try to return Waterloo to its once-held glory position in terms of when we had lots of opportunities for our young people. And I think, I think in the last few years, there have been a lot of good signs, and we don't want to take away from that, but an organization that continues to grow is one that's continuously improving. So, I'm gonna ask the chairman of the committees to come up and have a seat on the front row, and we'll call you one at a time, but we divided up into a number of committees and began tackling the work. The recommendations seemed to fall within several groupings, several categories, youth sports, high school sports and policies, middle school sports and policies, and coaching recommendations were the four big ones. There were quite a number of others that we looked at, and so, I'm gonna ask Jesse to come on up first, and we've asked the chairman of each committee to just talk about, a little bit about the discussion, the motivation for how we're gonna move forward, and then some of the recommendations. So, Jesse, welcome.
For those who do not know me, my name is Jesse Knight. I was asked to serve on this committee after numerous volunteer efforts in the community working with youth sports. Quentin Hart was our chair, and then Mark Gallagher and myself were co-chairs. And after we initially set the guidelines we were going towards the committee and established the subcommittees, we really looked at, from a youth sport standpoint, what are the needs in the community, what are the needs of the children out there, and really come down to three areas that we really focused in on. We really focused in on youth coaches and relationships with the high school coaches, making sure that, you know, at, at the youth program, if we are teaching the skills and fundamentals and beh...
very hard, um, over the months. And we've got the report before us. It's in our board packet. It's in Exhibit F. It starts on page six. Um, and what we'll do is why don't we get the motion on the floor, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Norris for some more background information. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept the recommendations of the Athletic Committee with appreciation to the members who served.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Um, and Dr. Norris, if you could provide some background on this.
Be happy to. Well, I want to thank, um, many of our members, well, all of our members for serving. We had approximately, uh, 25 to 30 members total that were able to, uh, join us. And, uh, we broke our efforts after discussing the initial charge, which was to, uh, improve athletics in our entire community, and improve athletic experiences for all young people. And, uh, it, kind of a subtext was try to return Waterloo to, uh, its once-held glory position in terms of when we had, uh, lots of opportunities for our young people. And I think, uh, I think, uh, in the last few years, there have been a lot of good signs, and we don't want to take away from that, but, uh, an organization that continues to grow is one that's continuously improving. So, um, I'm gonna ask the, the Chairman of the committees to come up and have a seat on the front row, and we'll call you one at a time. Uh, but we divided up into, uh, a number of committees and began tackling, uh, the work. The recommendations seemed to fall within, uh, several groupings, several categories: youth sports, high school sports and policies, middle school sports and policies, uh, and coaching recommendations were the four big ones. There were quite a number of others that we looked at. And so, um, I'm gonna ask Jesse to come on up, uh, first. And we've asked the Chairman of each committee to just talk about, a little bit about, uh, the discussion, uh, the motivation for, uh, how we're gonna move forward, and then some of the recommendations. So Jesse, welcome.
For those who do not know me, my name is Jesse Knight. I was asked to supervise the committee after numerous volunteer efforts in the community, working with youth sports. Quentin Hart was our chair, and then Mark Gallagher and myself were co-chairs. And after we initially set the guidelines we were going towards the committee and establishing subcommittees, we really looked at, from a youth sports standpoint, what are the needs in the community? What are the needs of the children out there? And we really come down to three areas that we really focused in on. We really focused in on youth coaches and relationships with the high school coaches, making sure that, you know, at, at the youth program, we are teaching the skills and fundamentals and behaviors that we want our children to learn as they advance through the athletics programs. So that was one of the recommendations, is how to foster strong relationships between the high school programs, even middle school programs, and our youth coaches, and hopefully even graduate some of our youth coaches up through the ranks over the years here to help support the high school programs. The second big, is, is a pretty big issue, is that is access to information for families. Um, there are many different methods that youth sports try to get information to families. Uh, Waterloo Schools is very good on support for flyers, uh, posters in the buildings, but there always seems to be that misinformation. So we set out on a mission to map out what all youth sports are offering or competing. We had a pretty good idea of, okay, this is the big offering. We have, you know, several different organizations offering programming. We have several different pri- club programs out there as well. And what we kind of realized is that, you know, people don't always know where to go find that information. And I, I lived that firsthand, uh, with, I coordinate for Youth Sports Foundation, for youth football, track, cheerleading. And I can't tell you how many phone calls I personally text you and just say, "Well, I never heard about the program." And probably the most disheartening point is, well, I'm at a point in the year when I say, "There's nothing I can do at this point, and I'm sorry." And, you know, you hate it for the child, you, you don't like them breaking up with their parents. So, way to improve communication out there. So we looked at a kind of gateway website that we kind of settled in with the school system, making linking to the individual webpages to the schools have, elementarys, middle schools, that families can go there. And if they get information that starts school year, go to the website, you can find out where you can go to get your child involved in activities he or she wants to participate in. And then a way for organizations to work with the school systems to be able to update and keep the most updated contact information for many of the clubs, you know, administration change over time, leadership changes, new organizations show up. Then the third item that we come up with was really is access to facilities. And, you know, many of our youth sports programs, we really are dependent on the school system provide facility for, uh, gymnasiums, uh, football fields, you know, tracks now. And, and one of the big components that we have is actually, you know, is shelter and, you know, restroom facilities for when, you know, we need, children need a break, they need water, or, you know, in case of severe weather, we need, uh, shelter for them. And a lot of times, that is at a last-minute decision that, you know, we need to move these children into a safe area. And so, working to improve access and, you know, find openings when there is openings available for us to come in and have children there after the district is done. And, you know, if we're changing schedules, you know, flexibility to move children to one location or the others. So, that was the three main bullet items from Youth Sports Committee that we recommended to the Board.
And Jesse, if you'll stay here just, or stay up and have a seat in the front, and I'm gonna call up the, and then we'll have some discussion. The Board can ask questions if that, if that's okay. Um, we next have the High School Sports and Policies Committee, Chair Tony Pappas. The co-chair was Robert Smith, and the members were Jim Langle and Jim Day.
Well, first I want to thank the Board for commissioning this committee to undertake this large task here. I was in charge of High School Sports and Policies. I chaired it with Robert Smith here. And, uh, we wanted to examine both horizontal and vertical articulation of athletic programs, to see how we could make them more effective. We also wanted to look at and examine best policies and practices, not only within our district, but also in other schools around the state and through the United States there. And also examine some philosophy issues and things of that sort. And the recommendations, the main recommendations that we came up with, uh, first, uh, we felt it was fiscally possible to fund a year-round qualified strength and conditioning coach at each high school. Uh, this would be a sports-neutral person, in other words, not a coach of a specific sport, because we felt it was very, very important that we had someone that was sports-neutral, someone that was certified and had certification in strength and conditioning area. Um, and I'd kind of put together the proposal of paying that person approximately what a beginning teacher would make in their first year, actually a little less. So you're talking about the area of about $20 an hour. Uh, we would, uh, hire this person basically in a part-time position of three to four hours a day, approximately five days a week, anywhere from 30 to 35, uh, weeks of the year. And, uh, when all was said and done, probably you would look anywhere from $12,000 to $15,000 cost per high school. But we already have a stipend in place that's bargaining the master contract that pays someone at East approximately, maybe around a little over $3,000 a year, and same thing at West. So, uh, that would offset part of that cost. Uh, but it's a position that we feel is very, very important, and a position that really benefits a lot of our youth. And, uh, the people that we have at West High anyway, I can speak specifically to West High, uh, they're doing a very good job. And there's a lot of young people in the weight room, being supervised, getting bigger, faster, stronger, and hopefully that'll pay off. Uh, we've kind of stepped up the program just within the last year or two. And so, I made the proposal for both East and West here, and, um, we feel it really will benefit us. The second one was the ability to hire coaches in our building. And through the collective bargaining agreement, that has always been a tough situation to do, especially when, uh, coaches leave, or they retire from coaching, or they give up their coaching, but they don't give up their teaching. And then you cannot replace those positions very easily in the building, because you don't have teaching spots available. Well, one of the proposals, and I think Dr. Smith has taken it to collective bargaining right now, and I think that made some great success and strides forward, where now we'll have a little easier time, hopefully, hiring a teacher in the, hiring a coach and a good teacher in our buildings, which is of paramount importance to all of us. Because, and I've probably been, obviously, the one that's been doing it the longest. Uh, in our building alone, I have about 34, 35 years as a head coach. And all, every one of those years, I've been at West High. Now, the next closest person to me has about six years of experience in our building. So everybody's, the other 22 paid head coaching positions probably have one to six years, and then it skips to me, 34. Most of those people aren't necessarily teachers in our building, unfortunately. And even taking a step further, I have the great luxury of having a lot of my assistants in the building. So you're developing the relationships, you're seeing the student athletes on a daily basis, you're dealing with their problems. Makes it much easier to be successful than if you're out of the building, you know, don't have the time, don't have the contact. So, anything we can do to further the hiring of our coaches in our building, both head and even assistant coaches, will be a, you know, will benefit all of us there. And that was our second recommendation. Lower the ratio of coaches to student athletes. Right now, we have, uh, basically the ratios put in of every group of 24 student athletes that we add, then we add another coach there. And it's, uh, probably more so even important at the lower levels, middle school, freshmen, even sophomore, uh, rather than varsity. But, uh, that's a situation where, you know, just like in the classroom, you lower the ratio, your success is probably gonna go higher or be higher. And we feel that would be the same in coaching here as well. Uh, the fourth recommendation, of course, is kind of pie in the sky, but, uh, we would look at building a third gymnasium at both of our high schools, and second gymnasiums in our middle schools here. Uh, the times have changed so greatly and drastically. Back in the, in 1955, when West was built, someone had the great foresight in 1955 to build a high school with a main gym, and then a smaller gym. But we did have two gyms. And that was not being done at the time, and I think it's helped us a great deal. But now, it has become such an arms race with so many schools here in terms of facilities, that most places have, uh, that are being built, new now, have three gyms even at the high school level, just because the gyms are used so often. And I'm the gatekeeper of our gymnasiums and people that want to use them, and we always give priority to our sports people first, our coaches, our junior programs, things of that sort. But our gyms are used seven days a week. But the problem comes in, in during the seasons, especially the winter seasons, where you have to hold 6:00 AM practices. I mean, it's just, there's no other way to do it, because we start at 6:00 in the morning, we'll go to 9:00 at night. And of course, who does that affect most? The disadvantaged, without a doubt. And once again, more and more, and we talked about it in the committee, social economics plays a huge part now in the success of athletics, unfortunately. And so, anything we can do to equalize that disadvantage, and to say we're on the downside of advantage, yeah, we probably are, you know. And of course, this has the biggest tag, price tag here. But anything we can do to alleviate that will help. Uh, the fifth one was the district and city should help direct junior sports programs, form more partnerships with the city, uh, the recreation department. And I think we've been doing that and are doing a better job of that all the time, but that's important. And then the sixth one, and I think Dr. Norris is going to make his proposals in June, if I'm correct, uh, but explore the issue of moving from one high school system, or moving to one high school system with one high school sports program. And right now, um, we share tennis with East right now. And, uh, so, if you want to say that's the first step, that may be the first step there. But a lot of things that we looked at, and a lot of good recommendations, I want to thank the, all the committee members, especially the people I worked with, for, uh, all the time and effort that they put in to find and make these recommendations. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Pappas. And Steve Gillan, um, will come up. And also joining Steve on the Middle School Sports and Policies was Jim Day, Marvin Spencer, I see Marvin here tonight, Todd Colter, David Letterman, uh, Leader- sorry, Lederman, Letterman. He's retiring, so also, that's... And Albert Wiggins. Mr. Gillan.
First of all, I want to thank all the other members of my committee, because they put in a lot of time and a lot of work. Marvin Spencer here, um, does more for athletics in Waterloo than anybody I know. So it was great to have him on our committee. One of the first things we looked at in middle school level was participation. Um, are we getting kids out for sports? Usually, this is the first time a lot of our kids get to participate in sports. And, um, at some schools, we have tremendous numbers. When I was at Hoover, in just about every sport, we had tremendous numbers. We always had to hire extra coaches. But at other buildings, we don't have that. So, we, we looked into how we can increase, um, participation. And through some of our recommendations, we feel that we can, we can do that. And once, um, I, I want to go back. I was a part of the Waterloo Schools in the late 60s and early 70s, when Waterloo was at the top in the state in athletics. And so, I'm thankful for the Board and Dr. Norris for, uh, starting this committee, so we can look and see if we can get Waterloo back up where it was. The recommendations that we came from our committee for the middle schools, some of them are the same that Dr. Pappas just talked about. That's why I was hoping I'd get to go before Dr. Pappas, but he beat me to it. One of the first ones was high schools need to be more involved at the middle school level. What we mean there is, we think it'd be best if our high school head coaches oversaw the middle school coaches and, um, programs in their sports. We'd have one continuous coaching staff. That way, if a head coach at the high school level would want to say, "Hey, I want my assistant today to go down to middle school and work with them," you know, he can, he'd be very flexible. We just thought that that would be a very good step to get everybody working towards the same goals. The second one is reduce the coach ratio to athlete racial. I know the high school has the same thing. We have one coach for every 24 athletes. And I remember one year at Hoover in track, we had over 60-some girls out and 70-some boys out. And so, we always had to ask for extra coaches. Uh, we had in volleyball, eighth grade volleyball one year, we had 40, I think, 46 or 47 girls out for eighth grade volleyball, and only had two coaches. What happens there is, you spend a lot of time not teaching skills, but just keeping everybody in order. Because middle school kids, they're all for, you know, rambunctious, you know. And we just feel that with a, a, um, smaller racial, we can teach the skills to these students that they need. So when they get to the high school level, they're ready to perform at the high school level. Our next one was coaches present in the buildings, another one that the high school has. Uh, at the middle school level is when you're really trying to get kids to come out for sports and to try sports. Like I said, once, once again, sometimes it's the first time they're gonna try a sport. And if you have your coaches in the building, boy, they can recruit, they can talk to the kids all the ti- time, keep them interested. You know, we, we really feel that that's very important. Number four is right coaches in the right places. That kind of goes to what I just talked about. You know, if we had the high school head coach overseeing the whole program, he can move some of his coaches around, getting the right coaches in the right places, whether they, they're at the eighth grade level, ninth grade level, or sophomore level. Um, some coaches are better working with the younger kids, some coaches are better working with the older kids. Let's get them where they need to be. Revise the elementary and middle school physical education program. I know Dr. Lee and her group was going to talk about, they just got done reworking the, um, PE curriculum. And what, all we're saying is, we want to make sure that we still teach the teen sports skills in our PE curriculums. Yes, all the leisure services type of stuff is very, very important, but we need to still teach the teen sports skills in our physical education classes. And the last one was rethink middle school season length. We spend a lot of time on the length of the middle schools' sports seasons. Right now, we have it, so at the middle schools, you can choose, like, the boys can choose, I mean, you can play both, um, basketball and wrestle. If we lengthen the season, they wouldn't be able to. They'd have to choose at the seventh grade level whether or not they're gonna play basketball or they're gonna wrestle. We feel like, we like the way it is. A lot of us like the way it is now, that they get the opportunity to choose, because some ki- everybody thinks they're a basketball player at the middle school level. Everybody wants to be a Michael Jordan, okay? But some of these little, little guys, you know, after a season or so, they understand, well, maybe wrestling would be a better sport for me, because I, I can wrestle at a low weight, you know, and make that weight. So we like the opportunity and then be able to choose. There are some benefits to longer seasons. You got a lot more time to teach the skills. So we, we was looking at that, what is best? Is it better to lengthen the seasons and not giving the opportunities, or giving the opportunities to choose at the middle school level? And when they get to the high schools, they know what sport they're gonna go out for. Right now, Cedar Falls, uh, is in the, has the same schedules that we have, because I did all the schedules for them for the last 13 years. So, they, they, um, give the students opportunities to choose at the middle school levels. But that's something we will still look at and talk about. I think that is all I have. So if there's any questions after we're done, I'll be very happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillan. And then on our, uh, Coaching Committee, we had that chaired by Bev, and Troy Dannen was co-chair, Darnell Jones, Brian Rafferty, and Jim Miller also were contributors to that committee. Bev?
Our committee, um, was a very passionate committee, and if you know Jim Miller, you know the passion he brings to, to coaching, um, as did the other people on our committee. Um, as you heard, we talked about coaches. Everyone that stood before you talked about coaches in their areas, because they're critical to a successful program. There were three recommendations that came out of the Coaching Committee. The first one being developing a comprehensive recruitment program, developing, um, materials that we can go out and actively recruit, as we do with our teachers. When we send teacher teams out, they're gonna be recruiting coaches as well. Um, we are very excited. We've started the process of getting approval from the Board of Educational Examiners to offer a licensure training course. We'll be the first district in the state to pull it off. And that will help us. Uh, we have some amazing people in our community who are working with our young people. We can support them in getting licensed, so they can make that transition to continue to work with our kids. Many of them who've already, uh, built those relationships, many of them who are parents that, that work with our kids on a, a daily basis. Um, so that would be a, a critical piece. Utilizing as well our colleges and our, our universities that are in the area to support in this process of recruitment. You know, if we have an opening, who do you call? You call those, those kids that are, are, um, in those programs at the universities and colleges to recruit them to, to join, consider being a coach in our district. The second, uh, recommendation that came out of our committee was a comprehensive support system for our coaches. And many of our coaches are, they're coaches for the first time. They don't feel the support that we could provide for them. Um, so a comprehensive mentoring program, engaging again those college and university coaches to provide support through professional development, um, giving them experiences, and giving them sometimes just a coach's breakfast. and giving them sometimes just a coach's breakfast, where you sit around and talk about what some of the issues are and how they can support each other. Uh, how one particular coach has experienced success and how they can share some of those strategies with each other, so that collegiality as well, um, was a, a recommendation. And the last one, in terms of some of the structural and administrative issues, um, Dr. Liederman is going to have the great opportunity, as she restructures in some areas, to consider how we can tweak our, our current structure to provide more support at the buildings and from the district level, um, for our coaches, coaching staff. Clearly, uh, one of the, the belief systems of the coaches, as we surveyed them, was that they want more input from a district lev- level, to add a district level on decisions that impact athletics in the district. So, um, if we can just pull our network together a little closer, so everyone feels like they're a part of the whole, and they're, they're supported, and they're engaged in the process and, and have, um, input into the process. It was a great committee, this is a great process, and, um, I'm looking forward to more individuals deciding that they want to be a part of our athletic program and consider coaching.
Thank you, Bev.
Thank you.
And then, um, Cora Turner headed our data gathering portion of the committee, and, Cora, I want to acknowledge your work and working with the building ADs and also Jim Day, because we had to collect a lot of information from young people. The board will be given a three-ring binder with complete, uh, did you get that yet? Okay, um, if you didn't, you'll be getting a three-ring binder. And the binder has all of the survey information, uh, data and all of the work of the committee. We weren't able to put that all in the executive summary. So, Cora, anything to add? Okay, thank you for that work. Cora also worked on the best way, uh, working with elementary principals, uh, to gather, to get communication out, as Jesse was talking about, with kids and youth sports. What would be the best way for all young people, uh, to, to have access to that information in their families? And then finally, Pam and Mark Gallagher and Shanley and I all worked on a, a giant, uh, map, uh, that is, uh, a GIS map. It is big, uh, that's got every single, um, athletic facility, gym, tennis court, ball diamonds. So we now have a, a map, so that we can begin to study patterns and begin to study usage in the community and, and in case something is busy over here, there's something over there, and so, uh, both leisure services and the school district will benefit from having a, a, a good-sized map of every athletic facility in the community. So I'm going to stop the formal part right there, you've got a whole committee there waiting to listen to your questions or comments.
And what, what may be easiest, if you are there, if we kind of ask some questions now, just specifically, I mean, I know I wrote a couple down, as I was going through, but Turner, is that okay? Yeah, with the committee, okay. Now, do you want to?
All right, uh, my first question is the role of non-teaching coaches. Where would they fit in best? I mean, obviously, if it's a non-teaching coach, they wouldn't necessarily be at the school, so that would be a negative, but on the other hand, you may limit yourself if you require every coach to be teaching, so could you comment on that?
Yeah, I'm going to start and then have Dr. Pap- go ahead, Dr. Pappas, Mr. Gillen come up. Uh, let, let me just say that, um, thirty years ago, or even more, uh, when we hired coaches, when we hired teachers, there was always a requirement of coaching positions with it. Uh, and that, over the thirty years, has changed drastically to where, um, that we need to first and foremost go out and get classroom teachers, uh, in specialty areas or even, uh, general areas. And so it's become a challenge of, of providing enough, uh, coaching. But, uh, let me say that a lot of districts es- especially try to have their head coaches and, and some key assistants, uh, at the building. Tony?
Yeah, and just to piggyback on what you said, actually thirty years ago, they were one contract.
Yes.
The coaching and teaching was all in one contract, so you had to do both.
Yeah.
And then, of course, many legal issues and years later, now they're separate contracts, which makes a huge difference. But to address your question, and certainly are we not implying that non-district and non-teachers are not necessarily good coaches, because several are. And once again, you have to analyze or look at, I actually have retired coaches that spend a lot of time in our dis- in our, in our building and have the time to do it, and, and that's a plus. But then we have others that, and probably the biggest barrier would be, that they don't get off work till five o'clock. How can I hire them and put them in a head coaching position when we start practice at two forty-five? In other words, then we have to push all their teams back, practices to five o'clock or later, which isn't as conducive to keeping kids out, and you lose them. And so, that's one of the disadvantages, probably one of the biggest disadvantages you have with non-certified or teachers, uh, coaching in your building. And not to say that we don't have a lot of good ones, because we do. But it's not that way here, I just read an article on the plane the other day, where now I think most school districts in the United States are over fifty percent, non-teachers are coaching their, their student athletes. And, uh, just from my years or decades and decades of experience, having the teachers in the building, working with those student athletes, being around them, is the greatest advantage that we can have. I hope I answered your question somewhat, or anything else about that?
I think that pretty much answers it. When I, I mean, years ago, there was also a, for some reason, a high correlation between coaching and driver training teachers. They had a lot of flexibility, or more flexibility than some other teachers.
Now we're privatized.
Yeah. So, you know, that's just one area where we, we've lost a little bit of opportunity, I think, and, not that you necessarily want to reverse that, but, but when you're talking participation going up and the sheer number of coaches and assistant coaches that we hope we need, you really have to look at, are, is it realistic to expect the number of internal staff to?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll address that right now, because I have the figures off the top of my head. We probably have an FTE of a hundred and twenty-two teachers, full-time equivalents in our building. I oversee approximately seventy-five contracted coaches, both head coaches and assistant coaches, seventy-five contracted coaches. Then I have twenty to thirty volunteers, I have a, two administrative assistant, event manager, strength and conditioning coach, athletic trainer, et cetera, et cetera. So I have over a hundred people that directly, I'm directly responsible for. So it'd be almost every teacher in the building, I mean, that's how massive it, it is. And the closer we can get to matching those numbers, the greater advantage that we're going to have. And yes, we, you know, we're one of the largest schools in the state, and we have one of the largest coaching staffs in the state, and we want to provide our students with the best opportunities we can, and that's why the Waterloo schools have bargained that contract. And, and I certainly don't have any qualms about the number of coaches that we have, because we have plenty. And, of course, if you watched my team this year, I had eight assistants, you know, seven were volunteer, but, uh, that was nice that they volunteered, and, you know, you had people that wanted to be a part there, so. Make sure that's, make sure that's on the record.
Let me also say that, that, uh, I think the entire committee would support the fact that, as we continue to try to grow and embellish youth sports in our community, there's a tremendous need for volunteers. I mean, huge. Uh, and, and so, th- there's never going to be a time when we're going to be a hundred percent teacher-coaches.
Right.
Again.
Right, I agree with that. Steve?
Just like teachers, we want to get the best coaches we can get. So if they're, uh, a non-teacher, and they, and they're outstanding, you know, we, we want the best. We would like to get our coaches in our buildings, that's one of our priorities. But we're not going to just hire somebody, you know, because they're a teacher, if we got somebody else that's just really a great coach and we really need that person. So we want, just like teachers, we want to go out and get the best teachers we can get, we want to also go out and get the best coaches we can get.
Does the contract give priority today?
Yes. Today, the contract gives priority. There's conversation about loosening up those guidelines, so we're always looking for the best individual to serve in that capacity.
Okay, so that's the, the negotiation, the bargaining we're talking about now, is there's still the?
That they would have priority.
Gotcha, okay.
And along those lines, Bev, what I was che- wondering about was the elementary teachers and the flexibility of their coaching at high school? Because I know, I've talked to quite a few elementary teachers that are good coaches in programs around the city, but they're at Kitterell and they can't get to West High under contract.
Right.
And so are we?
Because they're sk- they're?
Their time balance, yeah.
Right, it's more than just the contract, it's not like free time, they're with kids. So, you know, our times, schedules, our schedules are different, so in those instances, they will not be able to, elementary people would not be able to coach at a middle or high school unless it was an off-season, like, I think, correct me, baseball?
Sometimes we allow, if they can be flexible, often their practices.
Yeah.
And we actually look on an individual basis, there are situations, based on when we do practice and when the games are held, that it is allowed, but as Bev says, it's based on the time that they're having to be in the building with students.
And if we followed that biorhythm research from twenty or thirty years ago, we would just flip, uh, high school and elementary starting time.
And we do have some individuals, in fact, one is popping out this year, that, um, have a passion for coaching at the middle school, they're upper, upper-level elementary teachers, and so they, when the job opens up that they're interested in, they move to those jobs, so they have an opportunity to coach.
I had a question on the, the volunteer coaches, do you still, do you still have to be certified if you're a volunteer?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that, that's the issue with having in-house training?
Yes, they still have to have a, a coaching license to even volunteer.
Okay, gotcha. And, but I also, as I was reading through this, I, I did think the, what would be ideal is to have more funds available to pay for more assistant coaches. I mean, I, I'm just thinking psychologically, earning fifteen hundred dollars as an assistant coach, you're not going to get rich off of that, but I assume it's, it does, it provides more, um, yeah, what's the word I'm looking for? Um, support, I guess, uh, to, taking the job not more seriously, but just looking at it more as a job, more as a profession, I guess? And so I am understanding of that, that it, it may be, um, you know, reducing coach to athlete ratio, twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars, and, you know, in a very large school district budget, it's not much, but that may have much more of a psychological advantage too.
As, as would, um, having more professional development, having more coaching clinics, um, helping people, uh, making people feel appreciated.
Exactly, yes, yes.
Because, you know, our coaches, they work hard, it's long hours.
Yeah.
I, I think, uh, Dr. Pappas pays us to coach, based on, on what the stipend is, so.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we've talked about ways we can get, uh, we can motivate people to want to do this, because it's not easy work, and to show them how much we appreciate it.
So they feel it's more professional.
Absolutely.
That it's their profession, instead of, oh, it's this guy, I coach once in a while. Right, right, more pride.
And I also wondered, Bev, if we had done like an internal, um, marketing campaign, incentive-driven maybe for current teachers and for all new teachers to the district, that, you know, there'd be an extra stipend or something if they would consider coaching, or just kind of a really, uh, full-fledged effort to entice all of our current teachers, and what could be a benefit of them going into coaching being a current teacher?
Well, the only incentive that we're allowed to provide, uh, monetary incentive would be what's bargained at the table. So, you know, that would be, um, all we could provide that way, but we have been talking, in fact, we were just talking this morning in cabinet about ways that we could incentivize coaches to consider serving.
Being like gift certificates to dicks, or something like that, you know? I mean, just something that would?
Something.
Well, you know, one of the things we did at the beginning of the year, we brought back the coaches classic, which was just an opportunity for all the coaches to get together, to be a part of something bigger than just what happens with their team, um, those types, kinds of opportunities.
We think if we could also provide, going back to all of the recommendations, weaving them together, providing maybe some time off contract or something for all of the coaches in the system to get together, spend time together, collaborate, it's also very rewarding professionally. And so they would feel more like it's a, so we're looking at, you know, intrinsic things as well as, uh, salary things.
What's, what's the perfect balance of participation versus, uh, excellence, I guess? Uh, you mentioned maybe going to a, to a one, one system, and I'm assuming that the high school rules prohibit any school from having more than one varsity team? And sometimes limits the number of participants on that team?
At the state level, first of all, it looks at the building enrollment for a high school and dictates, you know, what is, a high school should have as a team, but I've never seen one where it comes out to be more than one high school team per building, per high school.
Okay.
So.
So, if you go that direction, or even if you didn't, then is it possible to have more than an, an indefinite number of junior, JVs, or sophomores or freshman teams, so that participation can stay high?
It's my understanding at every level, we encourage and wish we could have a JV team, because that only strengthens what we have on our varsity level.
Right.
And I've never seen a system, and Dr. Pappas can correct me, if we have more than one freshman or sophomore JV or varsity team. We encourage the participation, but I don't think we can have several freshman teams associated with the MBC that we play now.
We can, Lindmar has them, and we used to years ago have two freshman teams of certain sports.
But not for sophomore and varsity, you only seen one, though.
Sophomore and varsity only.
Right.
So. One, one varsity team and one JV team.
JV, yeah.
So also, when we checked around Lyle at some of the bigger states, bigger communities, uh, we had a committee member from Chicago area, and there, there are a number of high schools that, uh, keep, as you said, I know exactly what you're, what you're shooting at, we, keeping participation high, really embellish their younger teams, have more coaches out for the teams, more, a, a more rigorous schedule and all of it. So there's, there's a lot you can do to keep participation high.
So can you, can it be intermural? I mean, do we necessarily need to play other school districts?
Well, intermurals almost, in a way, are a thing of the past for most sports, especially during the winter, because of the building usage. Now, we do schedule a few special events, so they can use the gyms, but that's what's caused the biggest problem with intermurals. But also, adre- addressing your question about optimal numbers or optimal numbers of teams, or keeping student athletes interested, Ankeny really wrestled with that question.
Yeah.
Then they finally decided they're going to have to go to two high schools, now that provides more opportunities for their student athletes this year, and yet, in probably one of the buildings compared to the other building, for one reason or other, they certainly aren't as competitive as they used to be. Optimal number of teams, optimum number of student athletes, obviously lower levels, you want as many involved as you can, and we, we strive for that. And we have the no-cut policy, and I think in nineteen eighty-one, I was probably the last person to cut a basketball player in this.
But what we do have, and we often encourage, is the youth sport participation, like, for instance, that Jesse's involved in, and a lot of the other intermurals that we do do, keeping students involved, which also assists in building our varsity teams. So, we do have a lot of interaction still with the community and bringing about participation for students all year long.
Yeah, and it, it, just getting to the point, what I was thinking of even before this, it's, it's not the easiest thing to necessarily have two high schools and have about eleven thousand students. I'm thinking around our size, we have two examples, one is West Des Moines, which has decided to go with one high school with about nine thousand students, maybe in the district. Yeah, and so they, and they have one, and I've heard both sides, that they do very well with their teams, but I've also heard from parents that feel like it's so competitive that there's not an opportunity for kids to do it. Now, Ankeny, which is a little bit bigger and probably has more room to grow, where I think West Des Moines is essentially kind of done growing and kind of landlocked, they've gone two high schools, and then it turns into, well, Centennial is the girls' basketball high school and the football high school, whereas Ankeny High School is the golf and the tennis high school, let's say.
I think one went twenty-two and three, and the other one went four and eighteen.
Exactly. Exactly, so there's no perfect way to do that when you're this-
Going, going back to a participation, at the middle school levels, all students get to participate, all students get to play, so like, there was times at Hoover, we, we'd have, in volleyball, we'd have A game, B game, C game, D game, you know, everybody gets to participate.
I say that as a proud member of the D team, and actually, at the E team at Hoover Football, that was the lowest team, we were E for a little while, and then moved up to D.
Well, if I can, I can follow up on that, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but we also had, I think West High sent a JV wrestling team as a second varsity team to a quad meet this year, and I have seen in other states, uh, actually, I was recall, a cross-country team that had enough teams to have one varsity and free JV, and they actually entered JV teams, free JV teams in the varsity tournament as well as JV teams, so there are ways to still allow varsity participation, and even in some communities I've seen, like, in particular with wrestling, my background there, in these, in more individual sports, where they have sent a varsity team to one tournament, but they also send a JV team as a varsity team to a different tournament, so the kids are still getting varsity level experience, it just really doesn't really come down to play until you get into dual meets type, and district qualifying tournaments for state levels, so there are ways to still keep participation high and give the kids experience, so.
I have a couple of questions, has the sportsplex been looked at for potential for practices?
Uh, yes, absolutely, actually, uh, I think we just paid our rental bill for soccer, our soccer coaches have been using it, and then our football coaches are going to have some seven-on-sevens, so they're going to be using it, I mean, we've even gone so far to look at, hold an MBC meeting, somebody suggested we have to host a MBC meeting, our conference meeting, at the sportsplex, so, uh, yeah, uh, we're, we're using it already, we're utilizing, it's a great, great tool, great asset.
And could it potentially for volleyball, to help with the overflow there?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, the calls that I get for building usage, from all the volleyball teams, or club volleyball teams, cup basketball teams, et cetera, our, our gyms are so limited, uh, on Sundays, we usually start about eleven in the morning and go till nine at night with, and that's on Sunday, let alone the other days, with all the club or off-season teams or programs going, but yeah, the sportsplex will help with that, the only problem is, there's a charge with that, I mean, it's, it's reasonable, but it's still a charge.
Yeah, and I think on that, I know Mark Gallagher was on the committee, although I think he's probably been the busiest guy on the planet for the last-
You bet.
-eight months, or actually, probably just right around the time this committee was going on, but I think the desire is there, um, now the sportsplex is trying to run, is often close if they're not there, to being break-even, so it's charging for things. Now, on the other hand, it's, and it's a city facility, the school district hasn't participated a dime financially in it, on the other hand, it's, was entirely built with donated money, and I don't think the, you know, donations came, that this is just a city program and not there to benefit the school, so-
Right.
It's, it, everything's working together, and I give Mark Gallagher a tremendous amount of credit, for one, getting it off the ground, but I think there always is a desire to be there. I think, for example, there are ten-yard markers in the fieldhouse, and I think that's because high school coaches were calling Mark looking for space, so they added that in later, they weren't, and that was an example of the sports, and Mark being flexible and saying, yeah, here's a demand, high school coaches would like this, so we'll put that in, so, um, that's there, but it's just, it's figuring out, kind of on, on all sides, how to work it, work it out.
And then I had one more question with Steve, potentially, with the, um, the new elevated twelve PE program, has your committee, um, been able to look at that and see if those might meet the objectives that you had kind of put out in, um, one of your priorities?
No, our committee has not looked at that yet, I've talked a little bit with Debbie Lee about it, and, but no, we have not looked at it yet, as a committee.
I was just wondering if it might-
Yes.
Mr. Gillen, if I could put you on the spot again, just to talk about the issues on the middle school season, season length, just so I understand, it sounds like there are probably good points and bad points for both, and from what I gathered, the good of having the shorter seasons is you can provide kids, especially in middle school, just have an opportunity to try everything, figure out what they like, and then also, you mentioned Cedar Falls, and that's because Cedar Falls, the league is the six medals, Holmes, Pete, and then R4.
That is right, um, at the middle school level, the first season is volleyball and football.
Okay.
And then we go back into girls' basketball and wrestling.
Okay.
And then after Christmas is boys' basketball, and then in the spring is track, so-
Same girls.
If, if we lengthen the basketball season, the wrestling season, then the boys will not be able to choose, I mean, they'd have to choose at the seventh grade level between either basketball or wrestling.
Okay.
And, um, so like I said, yes, the six, the four middle schools in Waterloo, and the two middle schools in Cedar Falls, were kind of like a conference.
Gotcha.
So we're all on the same schedule, where we let the, let the students choose between basketball and wrestling.
Gotcha, okay, okay, thank you.
And was it ever looked at to put sixth grade athletics in?
We did, we did not bring that up in, in the committee, I think the, the overwhelming, uh, so I can't speak for the committee on the inclusion of sixth grade, but the overwhelming consensus was, kids need more skills, they need the skills earlier, and the, the, the kids also, probably most of them are going to be participating in AAU and other types of off-season leagues, and, uh, which, which can also be an issue with kids with, families with, uh, families who are struggling with income to find those resources.
I glanced through the statistics on the participation rate, and I'm, maybe I just didn't look at it right, but it wasn't clear to me if we identified how many kids don't participate in anything.
We have that, that's not, it's not in here yet.
Do you have it on the committee, Ben?
Okay.
I think you'll get it in, in the-
Okay, I've been seeing that, because-
Do you mean anything in, any extracurricular, or just that?
I think it was just that, we didn't do all extracurriculars.
But we have that, too, we have the, we're collecting that data for our scorecards and-
That, to me, would be a key metric-
Absolutely.
To reduce that to, as low as possible, that, so that every student participated in, in something at some time.
Exactly.
Just as Dr. Norris say, we have been measuring that for the last year, and have on the scorecard that he actually presents to the board, so that is one of the indicators of total participation by building on that card.
Okay.
I just want to say, as somebody who, I didn't get to every meeting, because they're at seven in the morning on every other week, and we had some nasty weather, but, uh, I want to thank all of you for your time, and one of the, the best things I felt that came out of this was the people that were on this committee are now invested in it, as well as they're now talking to each other, which is a huge component of this, we can't do this alone, we need the community, we need all those pieces, and I think we had those people at the table, so I just want to congratulate the group, because I know it was a lot of work, but I also think those lines of communication are open now, and I really do think going forward, we, we've got a lot before us, but, and we still have a lot of work to do, but I think one of the key things was opening those channels of communication, so I really commend Dr. Norris in getting the right people at the table, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of information in the, in the binder, and, uh, I think it was time, maybe a little bit overdue, to take a comprehensive review of, of where we're at, so I think this is a great, great foundation, and we just need to make sure we, uh, we act on it.
Yeah, and that's the, that's the key, yeah.
One thing, Mike, before you close, uh, I, I just want to say, there's a number of things going forward we're going to set in motion, and the board, this will not be the, the last time the board deals with this or these issues, uh, one of the things, I, I know people have talked about, um, coordination from the district level, we, we right now have Cora running ragged, being a full-time director of student services, and also trying to coordinate district athletics, so we have to, that's one thing that we'll be deliberating on. I also, uh, proposed, uh, in the, in the report on page nineteen, that the way to keep this synergy going was to have kind of a coordinating council, uh, for the community, and I'm going to be working with Mark Gallagher and others, what are the ways we can keep youth sports, uh, school sports, leisure service, keep everybody at the table together all the time, just, there's got to be some formal format, or, or it could slip apart again, but Shanley, I agree with you, everybody is very vested in, in doing it, so, go ahead.
No, and it, I'd just like to add on to what Dr. Norris said, I want to sincerely thank everybody that was on the committee and that participated in it, um, I think what we found as a board, we were talking about this as a board for a few years, um, before it came up, and I think what everybody found is, there's certainly a, um, desire, kind of an energy there, um, to, uh, look at a lot of these issues that maybe we haven't in the past, and so I think it was encouraging to everybody, the level of excitement and the level of work, um, that all the committee, committee members put into this, for that we are extremely grateful, and not just are we grateful, but I think we're motivated as a board, just like Dr. Norris said, to continue this, because in some ways, it's, it's, um, I don't want to say it's easy, but it's, it's easier in the process to start it and look at things that could change, but the key is actually implementing them, um, and I think that's on all of us as a board, and something we've talked about, and kind of our ideas going forward, not anything specific, but just that we have to stay after this, because it's, it's, the key will be in implementing the recommendations, also probably being flexible in those recommendations, but we've talked with Dr. Lindeman, um, as well, about continuing this, and so, with Dr. Norris's idea of having that sports coordinating council, having a, a system, almost like a checklist system, where we're going, um, through and talking about the recommendations, because it's, it's easy to talk about, um, what could be done, now, when we do that, sometimes we find, we're talking about mutually exclusive things, and so you've got to sit down and really kind of untie those knots, um, and we'll do that, but as I read through this, in the, the specific recommendations, I thought were very, um, helpful, and some of them, you kind of, it was surprising to me to read them, thinking, this is not rocket science, um, a lot of it is just about coordination and communication, um, and Jesse, I mean, I was thinking of you, just having somebody who, um, you could talk to, to set up football practice, or track practice, that sort of thing, and thinking about things as simple as bathrooms, that I hadn't really thought about before, um, the, one thing that struck me a lot was the amount of use our gyms already have, and how tough it is to coordinate that, the high school level, and Mr. Gillen, we talked about it at the middle school level at Hoover before, so, it's, it's figuring out, um, uh, who's talking to the right people, the coaching coordination, and having coaches from the high school level, work with the middle schools makes complete sense, um, the contractual issues, we talked about, the financial things, um, some of those are not, um, they're not going to break the bank, so to speak, um, now, add, there's a, certainly a price tag to adding a third gym, um, at the high schools, and a second gym at the middle schools, but I, I think that has to be on the table, obviously because it's a much bigger amount, it's going to take quite a while, um, to do that, but I think the, the biggest thing is that we really appreciate the work, um, of all the committee members, of Dr. Norris, in spearheading this, um, but also, we need to take this and stay with it, and keep moving forward, because, um, I think that will be key, just so that this isn't, that this has legs, and this can actually do some good, um, it's, it'll, it'll take time, but we'll keep, keep working at it. Anything else?
Well, and I just wanted to state that I think that offering that training, the licensure, the certification, Bev, could be a huge role player in this, because a lot of people could volunteer and become a coach that never thought they could be, and with that, I just wanted to thank anyone in the audience that is a coach, and all the coaches in our district, because it can be a thankless job, but a lot of times, you do not know, just like a teacher, the impact you have in that kid, and that coach might be, I had an awesome high school coach at West High, I'm still in contact with her, and she was huge in developing who I am as a person, and I just think that a lot of times, we take for granted, excuse me, the impact that coaches have in our kids' lives, and that in turn helps with their academic achievement also, and I even think, um, the young man, Mr. Gadson here, could speak to that, as far as he had his dad, but the influences of the coaches in his life and his athletic career, and, and I just think that we, we just, um, really need to prioritize this, because this is another part, just like the band instructor or the course instructor, that can have a huge impact in these kids' lives, so, thanks to every coach in our district.
I want to acknowledge also, I, I see two other members of the committee, Marvin, uh, would you stand, Marvin Frazier, thank you for participating, you've been a great, Marvin Spencer, I'm sorry, Marvin, I don't know where I got Frazier, I see, holy, he's retiring, and Brenton Shavers was also on the committee, thanks Brenton, anyone else that I missed out there? Plus, uh, we'll send a letter-
We've got a couple, Mike, a couple of coaches and-
We'll send a letter out from the board, uh, saying thank you for your participation on the committee, but thank you all very, very much.
But, but please know, we'll, we'll keep in touch, too, and, and watch us, and talk to us as board members, too, as we're, we're going through this process, and hold us accountable as well, um, because the key will be taking these and, and implementing them as well, so. Again, thank you all. If there's nothing further, we'll, we'll vote on the motion, and this is to accept the, the report of the committee, um, so all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, and the chair votes aye, motion carried, thanks again. All right, this takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is, um, information from individuals and delegations, and this is where anybody who wishes to address the board can, um, and is, I would invite anybody, you're more than welcome to, is there anybody that would like to address the board? Please feel free to. Okay, if not, then I won't read the card. Okay, going once, going twice, okay, um, we'll move on, then, the next item on our agenda is a consent agenda, which tonight consists of the minutes of our last regular board meeting on, on April twenty-eighth, personnel, also personnel appointments and adjustments since our last board meeting, also bills due and payable between board meetings, um, also the textbook adoption for the high school international baccalaureate diploma program, and Sharice Orpman is here for that, also the curriculum adoption for the K-12 physical education department, we've got a couple PE teachers here as well, and then finally, a cooperative sponsorship agreement, um, for boys' tennis, which is exhibit L. So those six items are on the consent agenda, are there any items that board members wish to be removed?
Item J, please.
Item J, and that's the textbook adoption for the international baccalaureate program?
Item K.
Okay, and item K, and that's the curriculum for, um, the PE department.
You're going to give Sharice the microphone?
Yeah, and I would actually ask that-
We won't get out of here this evening.
I would ask that exhibit I be, be removed from the agenda as well.
Sharice, I think I've got three of those.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. If there's nothing further, entertain a motion to, um, approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of items I, J, and K.
So moved.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, and the chair votes aye, motion carried, um, that takes us to exhibit I, it's on page twenty-eight of our board packet, um, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable, and the bills paid between board meetings. We get that motion on the floor?
So moved.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Okay, and before discussion, I will abstain from voting on this matter, because as an attorney, I represent a client who's paid by a bill. Any discussion or questions? Okay, if not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, and the chair abstains, motion carried. That takes us then to exhibit J, on page thirty-six, regarding the international baccalaureate diploma program, textbook adoption, uh, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the adoption of the international baccalaureate program, diploma program textbooks in the amount of forty-three thousand, one hundred dollars and sixty-nine cents. Put that motion, thank you, moved and seconded?
Second.
Okay, and discussion, and Sharice, do you mind stepping forward?
I'm going to ask Sharice to go ahead and let the cat out of the bag a little bit, and, and, so I won't do it on the superintendent's report, we'll do it now, why do we need textbooks, Sharice?
Well, there's a little thing called, we've been officially authorized as of last Thursday.
Yes.
So we will need these books to continue- So we will need these books to continue the program we've been authorized for.
Yes, we have to order them. And the approval, the official approval came just a couple of days.
Thursday.
I think it was Thursday, yeah.
Last Thursday morning, it's taken a long time, thank you, board members. We're going to do something, a signing party of the official documents. Tara's helping me with that, and we're going to have that at the next board meeting, at the very beginning. We want to bring the 2014, 2015 cohort, as well as the staff, and really celebrate this journey. It's huge, it's huge for our community, and thank you, because without it.
No, thank you.
And we've been told over and over again by the verification teams that without the support of the board, of the pedagogical leadership team, all of the leadership with the superintendent, associate superintendents, curriculum director, it wouldn't have happened. And I know that, and we know that, and our community is very proud. So thank you.
Well, thank you, and congratulations, too, on working at your, just a huge.
That was a record short speed.
Wasn't that great?
And Dr. Norris.
I said, well, Dr. Norris said, take care of these babies, and I said, I have. We now have twins. We have one Easton and one Weston.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Norris.
Thank you.
What was the breadth of selection? Are these the textbooks that are pretty much prescribed, or?
Well, and international baccalaureate would never want to be called an organization that prescribes it, but they would be highly recommended as, the different distributors, we have Pearson, we have Cambridge, and we have, Oxford is also a big publishing company that produces a lot of the international baccalaureate texts. And then they support the exams in the May of their senior year. And the teachers go through three different category levels of professional learning, meeting with other professionals this, over the last year, all over the state, to really talk to them about, what would you recommend that is at that level of rigor that's going to leave our students well-prepared for the exams in May of their senior year? And these would be those titles.
So the different publishers are actually publishing the same book?
No, there's different ones. So the teachers have a chance to look at them, but they all have the core focus and standards that go along with the IB exam standards.
So each publisher, in each of these areas, has a text that is compliant with the IB program?
And they're titled international baccalaureate, based on that, within that subject. So for our IB program, we're offering the chemistry and the biology, as well as the world history, language and literature, IB Spanish right now for language acquisition, and IB economics.
So given that we don't have experience in the IB program, what was the selection? How did you determine which one to select?
How do the teachers determine? Again, attending the, they go for three days for professional learning, training days. Teachers have gone through category one, and many of them category two, so two different levels of training. And then we meet with other IB staff and provide feedback. They actually get to know a lot of these teachers at the workshops, and those who have taught these subjects for years and years and years. We've really modeled it after other exemplar IB programs. One in North Kansas City, one in Omaha, and one in Minneapolis. And through that communication, those are the texts that they recommend, and those are the ones that have allowed those students to be prepared, and many of them getting the IB diploma, as well as Central Campus in Des Moines. I need to give them credit too. Their IB diploma rate this year is ninety-eight percent of their IB candidates. So, we have deep conversation about, well, which of these, all the ones recommended on that international baccalaureate list, regardless of the publisher, is all synced to the standards of the program.
So are we using the same books as Des Moines?
As Des Moines. I don't know how many of them are exactly the same. There are little variation, but the standards are all aligned.
Thank you. Thank you again, Sharice.
I thought we were going to end on Easton and Weston. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. Thanks again. The next item on our agenda is exhibit K. This is regarding curriculum adoption for the K-12 physical education department. And the recommended, it begins on page 44. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the adoption of Spark PE curriculum in the amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Put that motion on the floor, please. Thank you, and a second? All right, discussion. Debbie Lee is here, and I don't, if you want to bring up.
Good evening. I would like to introduce the critical people.
Yes.
Who have done ninety-nine percent of this work, and I am very, very appreciative of them. So we have Linda Garrison, and Brian Getzloff, and they, Brian leads the elementary, and Linda helps him with that, kind of. And then Mike Sinram is a mover and shaker for our high schools, and I depend on him a great deal. And then Sam Rogers also, who is not able to be here. Sam was in the right place at the right time. He needed a project for a course that he's in at U and I. And I said, I have a project for you, if you want to really tackle this. And he has done an amazing job. And so, Sam kind of rallied the middle school and high school, and organized them into the review for the curriculum. We had several different reviews, the process we normally use. And the Spark is a, was a curriculum we, the teachers really wanted to look at a little bit more closely. I don't know if you can see it, but the standards for PE are still on this whiteboard over here, which were put up in that process, and we've never bothered to erase them yet, or somebody didn't need the board. So I noticed tonight that they were still up there. One of the most important pieces that we look at when we look at any kinds of materials is whether they do support the specific standards in that content area. And the Spark does that. And also, Mike told me tonight, he told us tonight, he said, do you know what Spark stands for? And I did not know that. I think I read it somewhere once, but he said it stands for sports, play, and recreation for kids. And I like that. And there is skill development in it, there is leisure activity, there is the whole comprehensive nature of what we need to do in our PE programs, and in our curriculum at the elementary, middle, and high school. So, I don't know if you have questions, or if you'd like each of these guys to speak a little bit? I don't, I don't know. Tell me what you'd like to entertain from us.
I'd like each of them to tell us, as a PE teacher, what is the advantage of this program? How is it different, and how it will help our kids?
Well, we took a look at three curriculums, three different organizations, and we felt like Spark was the most well-rounded. You know, if you open up the curriculum, we felt that it was user-friendly. We looked at practicality, whether or not the lessons in there were appropriate for the students, whether teachers would use them in their classrooms. And Spark, by far, met those requirements. You know, they touched base on differentiation in regards to providing additional challenges to those students that, you know, are maybe more, your athletes more a little physically gifted. Definitely met the standards by far. So yeah, I mean, it was a pretty easy decision, based on the elementary part, as to why we chose that curriculum.
So how will it motivate my high schooler that is not athletically inclined?
Well, Spark was really originally set up back in the late 90s as a research project to San Diego State. And what they did is, they were trying to get obesity cut down and activity improved. And so, when it was a success in California, they went then and developed it into a variety of activities that were of interest. Sport Time and the publishers got together then, and they made it into a curriculum, a scope and sequence curriculum. It's one of the very few K-12 ones that you'll find in the country. It's very close to becoming, I guess, kind of a quote, national curriculum that promotes skills and maturic skills for the elementary, where they learn to move and like to move, and they continue it into a variety of different activities at the high school and middle school level. Now, how would it motivate your person in high school? Number one, hopefully, hopefully, number, hopefully, number one, they're not on a waiver from high school. And that would be an extreme helpful thing. Oh, okay. But it would, at a high school level, for example, this will be a part of our general phys ed class. It will not be our strength and conditioning class, it will not be our flex and fit class. So it'll be portions of it will come out and be used, but it will be mainly our general phys ed class, and offered in that manner. It will be. And, you know, tonight, we've talked about having a partnership with the sportsplex, and that's something that, at the high school, especially in physical education, we'd love to see. We'd love to see our juniors and seniors taking spin class, Tai Chi, yoga, at that center. And we've worked with Mark Gallagher a little bit, we met with him as a staff, and that would be, you know, a great place to initiate that kind of transitioning into adulthood. We'd really like to see that. So, that's sort of where we're at in the secondary level. We offer unique classes. Our strength and conditioning class, right now, has a, next year, over 260 people signed up for it at West High School. It's a very successful program. Our instructors are great. Dave Gatman, by the way, is his name. And he does an exceptional job, he really does. Our kids are not athletes necessarily taking that class. They are kids who really want to physically improve themselves. So, we have, right now, I think, a good core, and this will, a good fit for us, yeah.
How many years has it been since you've had a curriculum change? A long time?
This will be, I think, our 10th year.
10th year, great.
Yeah, I think it was 10 years ago, because we had the Kansas curriculum brought in 10 years ago, which is very similar, really, in a lot of ways to Spark.
Got to be good if it's from Kansas.
That's right.
Thank you to all three of you for your time. I know, and to Sam as well. I mean, I know this was probably more hours, and additional work for you, but thank you to all three of you for doing this. It sounds like a great program.
I still have a question.
Oh, yeah, please.
It mentions here the vision of, of the district vision, and I guess I'm not clear on what that is. It seems like there's three kind of competing interests. One is ongoing daily fitness. That's probably not an objective, because I don't think we have anything in our elementaries, do we? And only five and a half weeks per semester in our middle schools that PE is offered, so you don't have any continuous time period at all, so that probably isn't. But you also have the interest of the team sports, teaching the team sports, and then teaching the lifelong interest sports, if you will. So, you've kind of got different interests there. How is this program, or how is that all?
Part of, part of the wider new district mission is contributing to a community. And if you look at our national standards, the goal of physical education is to develop physically literate individuals who have the knowledge, skills, and confidence to enjoy a lifetime of physical activity. And that also means interaction. So, those actually mesh very well. This Spark curriculum is based from those standards, and very clearly meets those, which partners very well with helping students to be contributing citizens. And, you know, research has a lot of connections between your brain-body connection, your activity, and your function of your brain, your higher capacity for your brain to function. So, with the Spark curriculum, that would provide a continuous curriculum from K through 12, like Mr. Sinram said, he's a former teacher of mine. That puts us all on the same page.
So I think, I think I'm hearing the focus is on the lifelong sports.
There are sports activities, specific sports activities in the middle school and high school, that do work on team sport-type activity. But that's not the sole purpose of the curriculum. I think the purpose of the curriculum is probably twofold. Is one, is to increase the fitness overall, and the second is to find activities that students enjoy and will continue into some kind of lifetime leisure activity. That's not to say that a good athlete won't become better if he's in that curriculum. We're teaching movers, I guess, versus specifically doing drills for competition.
Yeah, because, you know, yoga and Tai Chi and all that, that is, keeps you moving, and it doesn't always have to be a sport.
But those that participate in the team sports as organized sports, then they get a waiver, do they not, from the lifelong sports?
You're absolutely true, you're absolutely correct. At the high school level, they have a semester waiver. So if you're going to use phys ed for a enrichment program for your athletics, it's not necessarily going to meet it with a waiver. If that's, if that's kind of what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm just trying to sort out, it seems like we have several different groups that end up with several different PE experiences.
It's exactly right.
If you will.
They do.
Okay, yeah.
The next step in which we're engaged in is the development of the curriculum units that these materials support. And Brian is organizing that at the elementary level, and I'll be working with Mike, who will be helping me with organizing that at the middle and high school level as well. So we will be working through that this summer, as well as into next year.
Debbie, drop down and give us 20.
So is it, is it? So is it conceivable that, you know, as students are pressed in trying to put as much in their schedule as they can, that some of these PE courses could be outside of the normal school hours?
We do have one class called Community Wellness right now, where senior-level students can go out into the community and get their phys ed credit. We really would like to take that and include the juniors and seniors, and do it summertime, before, after school. If they have block time that they're released from, that they could actually use it. And we'd really like to center in, to be honest with you, to the sportsplex rather than anywhere else, simply because it's so easy to go and check on with the technology they have there. They can actually email their heart rates on the workout, write directly to us, and we can evaluate it and say, perfect, great workout today. And they do not have to be in our campus area to get that credit. And that's our terminal objective, is to transition into the community for wellness.
And, Mr. Smith, that is actually also in the third paragraph, in the third paragraph on the exhibit, we indicate that we're going to be talking about and exploring those kinds of partnerships at an even deeper level than we have currently. That's a real desire of us to, there is definitely, as Mike has been such a forerunner of getting this done, and we've been talking about this, he's been doing it with his students at West. And I'm not sure the extent of it at East High at this point. But this is very important for us to help bridge those students from high school into their life after high school.
So I guess, what I think I'm hearing is, there may be not necessarily a requirement, but at least an opportunity for those students particularly that are out for organized sports to also gain the lifelong educate, lifelong education.
They can, and no one, a student out for an organized sport still can take PE if they want to. That is not, they, we don't, you don't, you know, we say you can do that, we don't do that. That is still open to them as a choice. And so if they would want to further that, or feel that that's in their best interest, or we could talk them into that, and tell them how, and show them why it would be good for them, then that can happen easily.
In all likelihood, if it's done outside the normal school hours, they're a lot more likely to participate in it, probably.
And the benefit, I see it too, though, is teaching those students, once they graduate from high school, if they're seniors, then they're used to going to a gym, and doing that on their own time, and hopefully like it, yeah. And so, yeah, it makes sense.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much for your work on this. Thanks to all three of you, and please give our thanks to Sam as well.
Thank you.
Thanks again. If, any other discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. Again, Mike, and Linda, and Brian, thank you, and Debbie, thank you very much for leading this as well. The next item, and the last action item on our agenda, is. Um, the next item and the last action item on our agenda is regarding removal of asbestos from Logan Middle School, and discussing likely tearing down that building. So this is Exhibit M on page forty-nine, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of Haskell Limited and approve the low bid for the Logan Middle School asbestos removal with advanced environmental in the amount of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars.
So moved.
Thank you, in a second?
Second.
Okay. And I, it's, the recommendation is of Haskell Limited for advanced environmental, and we have three bids that are on page fifty on our board agenda. And Dr. Norris, I don't know if you wanna...
Just, uh, just, uh, the fascinating thing is there's quite a spread in bids. There is that incredible. And, um, and let me say the three fifty, uh, we were so receipt, relieved to get that, because that was very close to our budget. If we would've gotten the eight twenty-seven, I don't know, we, we wouldn't be approving that, you know, it's just way... So, anyway. The quicker we get this approved and get it out of there, or quicker we get Logan.
I'm not real surprised. This is a business, that's just mind-boggling, but, uh, anyhow.
I have a question about that. I just drove by there, um, yesterday. And is there communication between the DOT and, because they just reseeded that whole grounds in front of Logan?
Which was a part of their contract, and, and, uh, they...
Oh, because... It just doesn't seem like that would be logical.
Right.
But we didn't pay for that, the DOT.
We did not pay for it.
Good. I just wanted to make sure of that.
We, we paid for it.
Yes, yes.
And then just if, is there an update on Irving? Do you have an update on Irving?
I don't, I don't. I'll get you that next time.
In, just on Logan, is there sort of a timeframe on this? Are we...
It's right in line after Irving.
Okay.
And so I, I would, I think Marty expects it to be done yet this, uh, yet this year.
Construction season, okay.
This construction season.
And it can be done with carver in session, correct?
Oh, sure, sure.
Okay.
They'll just have to put a construction fence around that.
Gotcha, okay. But those, the asbestos is windows, what, insulation?
Floor tile.
Floor tile, ceiling tile.
Insulation, pipe, piping.
'Cause what was Logan, probably early fifties?
Right at the time when they were just packing them full.
Don't be much left.
Is there a huge reason for the huge difference in cost? I mean...
There's, you know, uh, I'll tell you, generally, when you see something like that, it really means the other company, uh, has plenty of work. It's a supply and demand thing. I, it's the most I've ever seen.
And is this the same company that we are using for Irving? Is there, are there different companies, or is it the same company?
These are the, these are the three we typically get bids from, maybe one other company. I'm blanking on their name. But we do a lot of work with Advanced Environmental, 'cause they're right out of Waterloo. So they've got a lot less travel expense. I'm sure Dubuque said, "Hey, if we can cherry pick that job, we'll have to pay our people to stay in a motel," and, you know, all of those. Good questions.
But it was a huge disparity. But the fact that you have multiple bids kind of keeps everybody honest till the end.
In the future, we should try to add another bidder. So that, 'cause these two really aren't competitive bids, so you don't need to necessarily throw them off the list, 'cause it might fit their schedule, but...
Get cheaper next time.
True.
Well, the problem here is, Advanced Environmental next time.
Yeah.
After seeing this is gonna go higher, so we need, uh, we need a more competitive.
Yeah. All right, any further discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. That concludes the action items on our agenda. And next is the superintendent's report from Dr. Norris.
Um, I want to introduce Anastasia Stewart, and I want to introduce Megan Barash. They're both from US government, US world history? Government class here, taking in a, a class assignment. And I'm gonna embarrass Megan for just a second. Would you come up front, please? Many of you know Eric Barash.
Yes.
Uh, works in our IT department.
Yes.
And, um, Megan is a young lady that I personally got to know over the six years. She has a percussion recital tomorrow night at West High at six P.M.
Six.
And, uh, Megan, uh, is the drummer for our church, and, um, she has distinguished herself with outstanding grades. She was a, you were an all-state percussionist?
Two years, yes.
And Megan is gonna go on and major in music at U and I?
U and I, yeah.
So she, she wants to be a band teacher.
Yes.
Section leader in band, so... Megan, uh, just, uh, and Anastasia, just typical examples of fine Waterloo students. I think Anastasia was working on calc or something. She's how I'm working on.
Are you guys taking the AP Gov test tomorrow morning?
Oh, no.
Okay, good.
So, Megan, thanks for being a, a leader at West High School.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks both of you for being here. And, and so how do you, I know your, both your parents, I know your mom too.
Oh, yeah.
They're, they're great people, so say hello to them.
All right, I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Norris. Um, and now information from board members. And I'll start, I'll start over here, um, to my left, Angela Weekly.
Um, I just, the one thing that I want to say is that we produce excellent people from the Waterloo community schools. And not that I'm biased, but I might be a little biased in the young lady that spoke at the KVVG banquet and did it so well, about how we are, um, need to reinvest in our community in different ways that you can do it even from afar. And, um, she's a former student of mine that I had in the fellow, Pre-Teacher Teachers Club. I, where I went to, I walked over to Longfellow from East, and I had her in third grade at Longfellow, and, um...
Maria Thomas, right?
Yep, Maria Thomas. At that time, her name was Timberlake, and, um, she's just an amazing kid, and...
Foster child.
She wasn't my foster child.
No, but age must be child.
Yes, I was like, I was an old enough then, but...
But she gave Angie great credit for her...
Probably 'cause I fed her and did her laundry while she was here, so...
But what, what a delight, uh, yeah, and Dr. Smith gave her credit, and she worked, uh, for the president. And, uh, just an incredible young lady.
Yep, and, um, I did force my little sister to be her best friend, and they are best friends to this day. And they helped me celebrate my fortieth birthday. I mean, they're just great kids. We produce great relationships, great kids in our, our community. And I just think, along with how Sue said, these coaches make a difference, um, it's, it is, it's, it's long-lasting. You can invest in a kid's life, um, and make, produce these great citizens, so that's all I have to say.
Very well said. And it's gotta be a rewarding feeling, seeing a girl you, you knew her in third grade.
Yeah, I, I did. I, I shed a couple tears there.
Okay. It's, it's great. You should be very proud of that, so, thank you. And now Sue Flynn.
I just wanted to say that I had the opportunity over at East High to hear the duo acting team from East High. And, um, they were phenomenal. And speaking of relationships, they have been friends since, um, Pointer out in Evansdale and all the way up, and they're both fine young men, um, going to BYU and the University of Northern Iowa. And, um, wanna wish them well when they go to Kansas City, and if you get an opportunity to hear, see them perform their, um, duo act, it is, um, impactful and, um, very well done.
Great, thank you. And those are the students we heard from Mr. Dell, last meeting. Thank you, Sue. And Shanley McNally.
Well, you were right when you say we create or make good people, and I just want to say congratulations to all of our graduates, 'cause we won't have a board meeting this late in May to say, uh, a week from Wednesday and Thursday, East Expo and West High graduate. And I just want to say congratulations to all those families and everybody who put those kids, and, and we've got bright shining stars coming out. I know, I think there were forty-six of our kids that were at the Rotary today, and you guys can speak to, I think it was a West High grad from twenty-twelve that spoke. Um, we do create great kids, so, way to go, graduates.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Shanley. Um, Andrea Sparks.
Well, this is totally different. This is about leadership and me. I think it was about a week ago, Hoover celebrated leadership in me during the morning, and I was over there, and I saw some great kids that just exude confidence and poise when they were showing us around the school. So I think it's a very good thing we have in our schools. That's it.
Great, thank you, Andrea. And Lyle Smith.
Uh, yeah, uh, several items. First one, I want to comment on Mrs. Gedson's, uh, large partnership. This whole concept of creating and helping small business, I think, is, you know, closely aligned with what some people really think is kind of the future direction. Where, where going in terms of, um, generating more interest in teaching skills in the area of innovation, creation, entrepreneurism, and, and, and business operations, so that the students aren't necessarily first asking, "Can I get a job?" But can I start a business and provide a job? So I think that's a, a paradigm shift that's coming, and so I was really interested and hap, happy that, uh, I have somebody like Mrs. Gedson that's, uh, available for, for consult, consultation on that. The second one, just a eight-period day that's coming up, Wednesday, Thursday?
Uh, a meeting with whoever, whichever teachers that want to come.
Okay, uh, and that's no change...
High school.
That's no change, high school. No change in the length of day, right?
Correct.
But have we, and I don't need an answer right, right now, but, you know, have we looked at this in the context of maybe converting next year to hourly, and maybe lengthening the day, and all those other things? So I just hate to make a change now and then that not work with any of the future scenarios, so that's been thought through and works well. Okay. And as well as separating the bell times. I don't know if we're gonna do that this year or not.
For, you mean, the ten-minute for transportation recommendation?
Yeah, five minutes or ten minutes.
Uh, we're, we're absolutely taking a serious look at it.
Okay. Third item, I think the West High trap-shooting team tied for first, and then lost in the shootout, but so they...
Yeah.
They got second, so congratulations to them. Uh, they did? I don't know, is that determined?
Point of order.
Shots at targets.
And then, uh, lastly, congratulations to our National Secretary of, I don't remember the, um...
Ariyan, Arijan.
Double A, yeah, all the A or whatever. Was it Treasury or Secretary, Treasury? Anyway, the National, the National Office that, uh, one of our, the student that came here and made his presentation was successful in, uh, being elected to.
Yes, very dynamic, uh, yeah. It was fun to read that, uh, read that email, so... So thank you all. Um, our next board meeting would be in two weeks, um, but that's Memorial Day, so our next board meeting is in a month. It's on Monday, June ninth, and that'll be the start, it's the last day of school. It'll be about an hour and a half.
Dr. Lindeman is trying to get...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to text.
I can't read her lips.
Before we go, just because we don't have another meeting, I just wanted to congratulate the East High, um, the, the band, the concert band. They had a Division One rating at the state large group contest on Saturday. And the, the reason that's really significant is because they did have a Division One in two thousand nine, but before that, it had been nineteen ninety, since they'd had a Division One. And so I just didn't want that to go unrecognized tonight.
You got a lot of, a lot of good kids.
That's amazing, so congratulations, congratulations to them.
Joelle does a great job.
She does a great job.
She's fantastic, so, yeah. A lot of good kids. Thank you. Thank you. Um, no, they, uh, they should be commended. So, um, that means our next meeting is in one month, um, here in the boardroom in four weeks. It's on June ninth, and it starts at five o'clock P.M. So with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Uh, at second. Okay, second. Uh, moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion carried, we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Sorry, Ben.
Sorry, Ben.